Hi, I'm Shelby Williams with Plano City Council. First things first, it's about 11:00 PM after the longest council meeting we've had in a while, and today is my wife's birthday. So please join me in wishing her a happy birthday and thanking her because last time I saw her was this morning. She took care of our kids tonight on her birthday to enable me to be at the council meeting where Councilman Rick Smith, whose birthday it also was, was with me on the dais. But she enables me to serve on council sometimes at significant personal effort and sacrifice on her part, such as today. So please join me in wishing her a very happy birthday and saying thank you for her service in enabling me to do this for all of you. Second thing second. I am going to hold my annual Constitution 101 seminar. This will be, I think, the fifth or sixth year in a row on September 19th. Tuesday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Lord of Life Lutheran Church in Plano. So as many of you know, I do this every year during Constitution Week. This is a primer to the Constitution. We discuss what the Constitution actually says and what it does not say. We cover all of the articles as well as the Bill of Rights and select additional amendments beyond the Bill of Rights. So it's, I always love doing this. I always learn something every year myself. So I encourage all of you to come and bring friends and family, and especially bring kids. It's totally kid appropriate. And let's face it, our kids could stand to learn a lot more about our Constitution and our founding documents. So we're gonna, we got a lot to get through in tonight's meeting. Well, technically, we already got through it. I'm just gonna give you the recap, but we have a lot of recap to get through. So I'm gonna try to go through this quickly, but we have a couple of meaty discussions that I'm going to spend some particular time on. So in the preliminary open meeting tonight, we we reappointed members of the Community Relations Commission. We reviewed the comprehensive monthly financial report. And we had an update on the short-term rental study. So Short-Term Rental Task Force was convened. In early May, we passed an interim ban on new short-term rentals in the city. That went into effect, I think it was May 20th. We convened a Short-Term Rental Task Force to explore, as I put it, whether, where, and how short-term rentals may be appropriate in Plano. So there was a, there was an open house last week, but there is a virtual open house still going on through this Wednesday. If you're seeing this on Tuesday, that means tomorrow. On www.planosstr.com, you can go there to learn what's going on with short-term rentals in the city. The findings of the Short-Term Rental Task Force will be presented in October to Planning and Zoning and Council. And then Phase Two will focus on potential solutions. Right now, they're gathering data. And that period is gonna go November through February, which will give us approximately three months to craft any ordinance amendments before the expiration of the interim ban mid-May of next year, 2024. So moving on to our regular meeting, Congressman Keith Self visited us and recognized Plano's 150th birthday. So thank you Congressman for coming to our meeting. Also, September is Hunger Action Month, or as the mayor pointed out, has become known around these parts, Peanut Butter Month. So we have a goal this September of raising 200,000 pounds of peanut butter and $200,000 to aid those with food insecurity. And we had a very special occasion. So there was a recognition of the Plano Police, Plano Fire Rescue, and Medical City of Plano for their lifesaving efforts with ECMO, which stands for Extracorporeal Membrane Oxygenation. Now, ECMO basically bypasses the heart and lungs to preserve and buy time for cardiac arrest patients. One of our residents, Rick Armijo, was found unresponsive. And after Plano Fire Rescue and Plano Police responded, after two shocks with the defibrillator, he was determined to be a candidate for ECMO. Now, what that means is normally, and I experienced this myself, I wasn't the one receiving resuscitation, but normally, when somebody has had a cardiac arrest, the first responders will try to revive them in place. They will not transport them in an ambulance to the hospital to try to revive them. Now, I asked about this myself in one of my, when my police ride-along last year. We responded to a man who had had a heart attack. He unfortunately didn't make it. But one of the questions I had after that was, a Plano Fire Rescue was on the scene using a Lucas machine to try to resuscitate him. He was unresponsive. And one of my questions was, why is he not being put on an ambulance trying to revive him in the ambulance en route to the hospital? And the answer that came back is, study after study, statistic after statistic, has shown that the probability of reviving a heart attack patient is significantly increased if they try to do that on-site and do not move them. I don't know all the particulars as to why, but I accept the results of the statistics. But in ECMO, if somebody is a candidate for this, then they do transport them to the hospital. It buys them time where the hospital, where they can get to the hospital and have the kind of lifesaving procedure that a hospital is equipped to do without running the risk that they are going to worsen their chances. And so they actually transported him. And 13 days later, he was released from the hospital and recovered. And this was a healthy guy. They showed pictures of him playing adult soccer and everything. So, and he was at the meeting tonight where the recognition was received. And so it's just one more example of the phenomenal nature of Plano Police, Plano Fire Rescue, and hats off to Medical City of Plano as well. This was a really tremendous story. And thanks and gratitude to everybody all around. Moving on to the regular meeting, we pulled three items off Consent Agenda. The first item I requested be pulled was for the Rowlett Creek Water Wastewater Treatment Plant, Sewerage Treatment Plant in East Plano from the North Texas Municipal Water District. They had requested a variance to do some stuff. So I was trying to dig at the information about what they were doing, where, and how, and why. So the long and the short of it is, they are basically replacing two basins, effectively demolishing them and rebuilding them. One is to replace one water filter system with a different, better water filter system. And it's supposed to take a smaller footprint on the existing basin. The next, which is used for chemical treatment, is going to be repurposed or reconstructed, I guess, to use UV disinfection. So they, what they said at the meeting was that when using chlorine disinfectant, the water is supposed to pass through for 30 seconds. But with high-powered ultraviolet UV light, the disinfection is instantaneous, so it can pass through there. So they're not building anything where there is not already a structure. They're not expanding their footprint. The reason for the variance is because the plant was built very long time ago. And it is now located in a FEMA floodplain. So they had to have a variance effectively in order to be able to demolish and construct the new disinfectant. Next, there is a property for purchase across, that the city is purchasing across from Bob Woodruff Park and adjacent to Point Park. And the reason for this is, it's an isolated estate. It's for $1,585,000. That's for over three acres of land. And the city is building a facility, a maintenance facility, on one portion of the parkland. And so the idea is to purchase this spot of land to to supplant, to relocate the usable park space. And as part of our Parks Master Plan. Councilman Rick Adeli raised some points about negotiating the fee. I accept that the, the cost that we arrived at was the lowest cost we could get after staff had negotiated. He and I both ended up voting no on it. The question I had at the end, I knew which way this was gonna go, but still, do we, even though it's part of our Parks Master Plan, do we truly need that little corner of land? Maybe I should have proposed we table it instead to explore that. But instead, I just voted no. So the next item was, consent item that was pulled off was for changes to Plano's Economic Development Incentive Program. This was pulled from Consent Agenda by a citizen, which our citizens can do. Citizens can pull Consent Agenda items for individual consideration. And we ultimately passed it. So a note about our economic incentives. Texas Government Code, state law, allows for various mechanisms to offer economic development incentives. I generally support economic development incentives if they are managed appropriately. So a couple of key points. First, as was pointed out in tonight's meeting, we have a policy to make sure that any economic incentive that we propose is revenue neutral. Meaning it is going to garner, it's anticipated to garner more incoming tax revenue just by virtue of existing in the city than it is in tax revenue that we're going to be giving as an incentive. Now, we shouldn't, we shouldn't just be passing out free money, which is effectively what it is. It should be used philosophically to cultivate the environment that our residents really want to see long-term in Plano. And the second aspect of this is, we have had a very small toolkit for economic development incentives for quite a while. And so we're revising that to provide more tools so that we can remain competitive for the types of economic development projects that do fit the mold of what we want to see in Plano and make sure that we remain a vibrant community that people want to live in. So one in particular tool that you've probably heard me speak about many times is tax abatements. So the idea of a tax abatement is, you're going to improve a property. You're gonna build on it, you're gonna renovate it, whatever you're gonna do. It's going to increase the taxable value for property taxes of that property. I don't think you should be punished for that. A tax abatement says, you know, and Toyota's a great example. They built a $350 million campus on a green field that massively increased the taxable value of that green field. Because now it's taxed, or the taxable value is the value of the land plus the improvements, that $350 million campus. Well, having Toyota there necessitates some increase in the cost of city services, but not that much. And so offering them a tax abatement makes a lot of sense. It says, you're not going to be punished, punitively, literally, for building a valuable campus here. And with other tax abatements, it's like if you're just going to improve an existing property, it doesn't have to be a green field. If you're going to improve an existing property, we're not gonna punish you for that. That's perverse. Where I have a problem, where I have a challenge is, I think that principle of tax abatements should be extended to everybody. Nobody should be punished for making their property better and more desirable. I think that should be available to homeowners, small businesses, everybody. So case in point, at my old home in East Plano, after holding out for a long time, we finally built a pool. I know, first-world problems, right? And because we built a pool in the backyard, our property value went significantly higher because we now had a pool. That pool didn't necessitate one dime increase in the cost of city services. Whatever water we put in it, we were paying for to the city. We paid for all the inspection fees pursuant to building it. The fact of its existence didn't cost the city anymore. Or the school district, or the county, or Collin College District. However, all of those four entities received more tax revenue as a result of me building that pool. Well, that's not right. And it's not just me and my pool. I don't want that kind of philosophy of punishment to be levied on anybody, whether it's Toyota or somebody just putting a new roof on their small business. So it's one of many reasons that I think our property tax system is woefully antiquated and it no longer makes sense. You've heard me speak about this before. The, the value of your property has nothing to do with the cost of city or school services. And it also has nothing to do with your ability to pay your taxes. So after this legislative session, even though we have a long way to go, I'm more hopeful than ever that we are at least on a very slow path to eliminating property tax in Texas. So by the way, I also conduct an annual Property Tax 101 Seminar, free to the public, just as is my Constitution 101 Seminar. And that is in the spring after valuations come out. So attend that next year if you haven't attended it already, or if you have, attend again. So anyway, with economic development, I have no problem with tax abatements. And we want to make sure that we are providing appropriate incentive to cultivate, to intentionally, deliberately cultivate the mix of commercial types that we want. We don't want to be the equivalent of a mining town that dies when the mine dries up. We want to cultivate a broad diversity of business types. And we want to cultivate a city that our residents want to remain in and that people want to move to. So, but we have to do this with balancing fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. Which brings us to the next item, which is our hearing on the budget and tax rate. So there was a little backstory. The no new revenue rate, which we have adopted the past four years in a row, means just keeping property taxes flat. Not the tax rate, the actual level of taxes flat on properties taxed in both years from one year to the next. We have adopted that the past four years in a row, even under tremendous inflationary pressure. Because with the, I'll call it the excesses of the prior years and the pandemic and the inflationary environment, we wanted to be very careful in how we taxed and spent with respect to our people who were suffering. And many still are. We're in a, we ain't out of the woods. So we were proposing originally, our current tax rate is .4060, that means 40.6 cents on every $100 evaluation of your property. So the city manager's recommended budget had a tax rate of 41.76 cents per hundred value, $100 evaluation. Now, the no new revenue rate is keeping taxes flat. The voter approval rate means a 3.5% tax increase, or no more than a 3.5% tax increase. However, if you do not take all of that 3.5%, you can bank the increment for up to three years. So the 40.60 would be about our voter approval rate of a 3.5% increase. The city manager's recommended budget of 41.76 cents per $100 evaluation, that's a little higher than the 3.5%. So we had some debate about this at a prior meeting. I, I did some off-the-cuff analysis. Not really off-the-cuff, we got a lot of data from city staff. And I did some analysis on the past 20 years of budget increases, inflation from CPI, from Bureau of Labor Statistics, that's Consumer Price Index, as well as MCI, that's the municipal cost index. That's what municipalities actually have to pay for things like asphalt and sewer pipe, things that the average consumer doesn't have to pay. And pay for it. So all this analysis showed that over 20 years, we've kind of gone like this with respect to the alignment between the MCI inflation plus population growth. We add more people, we have to provide services to them too. So philosophically, we should be keeping, just keeping pace with MCI plus inflation. Because that represents increased costs to the city as well as increased residents that we have to provide for, provide city services for. They should, we should be increasing our budget and the taxes just enough to keep pace with those. Anything more than that should get voter approval. That's the philosophy behind the voter approval rate to begin with. Back in 1981, it was called the effective tax rate, and it was set at 8% back when inflation was about 8%. The idea was cities, counties, schools, et cetera. You can keep pace with inflation, but beyond that, you need to give the voters a say on whether they want a tax increase. It was a good philosophy, but it wasn't pegged to inflation. It was just 8%. And then when interest rates came way down, they had that gravy train available as long as property taxes, property values went up. So that changed in 2019, which was the year you elected me. But also that year in the state legislature, they enacted property tax reform. And that 8% threshold came down to 3.5% and got renamed to the voter approval rate. The more intuitively named voter approval rate. So now, we're in the situation that we've got this 3.5% threshold. And now inflation comes back up to precipitous levels. And we've still adopted the no new revenue rate in those years because we didn't want the double whammy on our people. Well, now, with this 20 years of analysis, we've seen a couple of points of equilibrium. And this year, though we are proposing the first property tax increase in five years, this, and the reason I support it, is that this will effectively achieve the equilibrium that we have had at those rare points over the past 20 years. 2003 to about 2007, there was a little bit of a disparity. And then we achieved equilibrium. And then the bottom fell out of the economy in 2008. Our budget went down, but MCI inflation went up. And then they started to converge again, so we were taxing a lot more even though inflation and population were coming down comparatively. So the taxing went up. We achieved equilibrium around 2019. And we, we then created an imbalance again when we didn't maintain equilibrium. MCI and population went up, and then in the past two years went way up. But we adopted the no new revenue rate. There's an offset to that. We passed an historic bond package in 2021. And the debt portion of the tax rate is not counted in the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate. So taxes still went up, but it's to cover the cost of all of those bonds that we approved. And by we, I don't mean just council. It was, we passed it to put it on the ballot, and then the voters approved it. So that leads us to the current environment. And we have also heard that our staff pay increases are not keeping pace with other area cities. So we have to remain competitive as well in terms of attracting top talent to provide excellent city services. And that's gonna lead to what I say in a second, but we did a little horse trading tonight over, okay, we want to provide an increase in compensation. At the last meeting, I said, I'm okay with the 41.76 rate, well, more than 3.5% increase, as long as we are allocating that excess to a compensation fund. Because we're in the midst of a compensation philosophy study. And probably three more months before that study's complete, it's going to show us how we should be compensating in order to remain competitive and attract top talent and maintain quality city services, et cetera. We anticipate that we are going to have to put some additional money into staff compensation because we've not been keeping pace. So that's why I said, okay, put the delta in a compensation fund, earmark it for staff compensation, not for just, you know, whatever comes down the pike. So I do support making staff as whole as we can. Because first, they work really hard. Second, we've been giving them moderate pay increases over the past several years, even with the no new revenue rate. But like, we gave them a 3% pay increase across the board last year. But a 3% pay increase amid 8, 9% inflation, that's an actual real pay cut. So they effectively took a pay cut because of inflation. But we have to counterbalance that simultaneously against the tax burden on our taxpayers. Because they're not getting 9% raises either. They're suffering from the same thing. So all of this has to work in a balance. So I did propose that this year in particular, because we are a mature city now, because I think we are achieving equilibrium again, is the perfect time to adopt a a budget and tax philosophy. So we're gonna work on the parameters of this and the language. But what I have in mind is a codified philosophy, something in writing to guide this council and future councils during every budget cycle. And some of the tenets of this that I have in mind are that we should take a multi-year view. And at first, I was thinking maybe just like a five-year view. But the more I think about it, I think we should take a backward look, three or four years, as well as a forward look, three or four years. So that could be a six to eight-year span. But whether, as we've seen, this roller coaster with imbalances between MCI and population growth counterbalanced against budgets and taxes, sometimes things happen where we don't strictly speaking want to increase taxes. When the Great Recession happened, we deliberately did not jack up taxes. We deliberately curbed spending. And the same thing when the pandemic hit, when the pandemic hit because of the uncertainty and because of the impact to our people, we didn't want to hit them with a tax increase. And then the killer inflation started, and it was the same thing. We didn't want to hit our people with the double whammy of massive inflation and a big tax increase. But eventually, you gotta pay the piper. And so I want a philosophy that actively looks at the past several years and looks forward to the next several years, even though nobody has a crystal ball, and says, we're taking a multi-view, multi-year view of this, and we're planning for the long term. We want to make sure we keep a healthy balance between our taxation, our spending. And we really need to codify this as well in the pillars of that, which I think align with the city manager's pillars. So these three pillars that I have are, number one, fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers. That includes evaluating and recognizing the inflationary pressures that our taxpayers are under. The second is maintaining high-quality city services. We have earned the, the name, the City of Excellence. And I, I will not sacrifice that on my watch. We will remain the City of Excellence for as long as I have a say about it. But we have to balance that against our ever-present fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers. And the third is remaining competitive. That kind of goes hand in hand with maintaining high-quality city services. But we need to attract and retain top talent. Which means if other prominent area cities are providing greener pastures, then we need to be at least green enough to attract and retain key talent. Another statement that I want in this philosophy is the recognition that the city has no money. It's all the taxpayers' money. That ties in with the fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers. I think we should always keep that at the forefront of our minds. I think we should explicitly express that our goal is to, over time, on average, make sure that our spending just keeps pace with the municipal cost index plus population growth. We are a mature city now. We're not growing anymore. We don't need to adopt a different philosophy. I think we should also adopt zero-based budgeting, which we do not. That means every year, you just start from scratch and build your budget based on what you need. Now, when you already know what you need, because you needed it this year, that's a pretty easy exercise. But you don't just take your existing budget and then grow it a little. Because things change over time. And the example I use is that, you know, nobody's seriously talking, at least not in Plano, about cutting public safety. But maybe you take another look at the horse and buggy unit. We don't actually have a horse and buggy unit in Plano, by the way. That's just, just for example, but you get the idea. And I also think we should stop issuing bonds for maintenance. We are a mature city. We have a lot of stuff to maintain now. We know we're going to have to maintain it. We know we're gonna have to maintain some stuff this year, some next year, some in five years, some in 30 years. It's not gonna be a surprise. So when we issue bonds, two things happen. First, we pay interest on those bonds. We pay $20 million a year, more than that now, just to, on the interest on our We pay twenty million dollars a year, more than that now, just to, on the interest on our bonds. That's like you just paying that much in credit card interest, never mind the principal. And I think a lot of that can be avoided if we operationalize our maintenance expenses. It's basically moving the, the, the tax burden over from the INS, interest and sinking, the debt column to the O and M column, operation and maintenance. Maintenance is right there in the word, so use that for the maintenance. But if you move it over, it's not a one-for-one shift. You, once you move it over, you don't have to pay the interest that you're paying in the INS column. So there should be a savings there and as long as we are creating the maintenance roadmap that I want, where we have a thirty-year view of all of the stuff in our city that needs to be maintained, roads, facilities, water lines, sewer mains, et cetera. Then we should be able to manage that. The other thing that happens with debt is any taxes and the associated tax rate for debt, they're two separate components of the calculation, debt has its own component, debt and debt service, are not included in the no new revenue rate or the voter approval rate. So when we pass this nearly four hundred million dollars worth of bonds in twenty twenty-one, taxes went up even though we adopted the no new revenue rate because the taxes, the, the no new revenue rate was not subject to the increase in taxes due to the debt, the bonds. So that's important and I wanna exercise uh appropriate um uh appropriate restraint there with bonds. Next. That wasn't next, I've lost my place. Well, I'll just go from uh memory. Uh next, we heard the Fry's rezoning, so the old Fry's in the crook of um, technically it's at Plano Parkway and Executive, but it's basically in the uh northeast crook between seventy-five and George Bush. The old Fry's, of course, went out of business. The proposal to rezone it and build primarily multifamily, five hundred and one units of multifamily and then thirty-three single-family attached units like nestled in the middle of all the apartments. Um that has come a few times. So the first time it came up, the applicant withdrew it to make some modifications. Uh the second time, planning and zoning denied it and the applicant appealed to council that came before us uh a month or two ago. And then uh it was remanded back to P and Z to fiddle with it. P and Z took another vote, it passed six to two and came before council tonight. Um I'll skip to the punchline, it passed five to three. I was not in support of this, doesn't really matter now, but that that kind of intersection between two major um interstates, uh well, technically George Bush is in an interstate, but you get the idea. Uh main roads like that, uh seventy-five and um George Bush. The intersections there are incredibly special properties. And as it was, as was brought up many times tonight, that's the gateway to Plano, coming from the south. That intersection of seventy-five and George Bush. And I understand that commercial property is um not as desirable now as it was a few years ago. Um largely because of the aftermath of the pandemic, commercial property is not in as much demand. Uh certainly not like residential property, which is, especially in Plano. And just across George Bush at City Line, there are unfinished commercial spaces, just waiting for somebody to want them. They're not there yet. I'm sure they will be, uh because the population of planet Earth is not decreasing and the desirability of Plano is not decreasing, as long as I have a say about it. So the fact is that the dust has not settled from the pandemic with respect to commercial property. And and demand for commercial property. It's changed, but the dust has not settled. The commercial property landscape right now is not the same as it was two years ago, and it's gonna be different again in two more years. But anything we build on that land, or any land for that matter, is not going to be a two-year commitment. It's gonna be like a fifty-year commitment. And so when it's done, it's done. And as I said tonight, I'm increasingly trying to take a long-term view of my decisions on council and what we do, like a fifty-year view. Um and consider how everything we do shapes the Plano that exists when all of us are dead and gone. And I believe that property should have been held for something special. We don't have many of those, we have just a handful in our city. So it's going to become some apartments, little bit of office, mainly apartments and uh s- single-family attached units. There is gonna be a little park in there, but like I said, that passed. Uh next, we heard a, a request for a specific use permit and a variance for a tattoo shop. The applicant um showed some of his artwork, very gifted, um very gifted gentleman. And that's gonna go up at Premier, off of Premier Drive and Parker Road, effectively seventy-five and Parker Road on the northwest side uh on the second floor of a, a little complex there. The variant, so it's an SUP, specific use permit, that's required when there's going to be a specific use, in this case, a tattoo shop. Tattooing and permanent cosmetics is what the category is called. The variance was required because it is for tattooing and it is less than a thousand feet from the nearest residence. So the variance was required and it was required to show that it's gonna maintain standards of public health, et cetera. So that passed unanimously. So those were the first four items that I discussed from our regular meeting. Uh the rest went fairly quickly, they were all to make adjustments to our ordinances based on uh some of the legislation that passed out of Austin this session. Uh to bring us into conformance with those. So the first was modifying our backyard cottage, backyard cottage ordinance um to conform with new state legislation. Uh basically, we had to say that the um, if you rent the cottage, it has to be rented simultaneously with the main residence, you couldn't piecemeal it. And uh there's a provision in there in the state law as well that uh if you violate this, that or the other, you'd actually demolish the cottage, pretty harsh. Um the next was to modify various sections of our zoning ordinance to conform with recent state legislation. Uh specifically amendments, nonconformities, non-residential districts, planned development districts, landscaping and uh tree preservation and, I'm out of fingers, um exterior wall construction standards. That passed. Next was modifying various sections of our city's uh subdivision ordinance to conform with recent state legislation. Um again, uh mainly definitions, assurance for completion and maintenance, um maintenance of improvements and requirements for public improvements, reservation and design. And last but maybe least, uh we updated our zoning inspection fees to conform with, you guessed it, recent state legislation. Um we had previously based it on the uh basically four percent on the cost of the um, the development that was being proposed. Uh but the state legislature said you can't uh base it on the value of a construction project, you have to base it on your actual costs. But there are a couple of hoops to jump through, like we can't recover the overhead uh for the inspection. If I understood right, we couldn't recover the fuel charge for the inspector to actually get to the inspection site, things like that. So we just moved to an hourly rate. That passed, but we did determine that we should undertake a um uh inspection fee study to figure out how to uh best approach this so that we're not losing money, but we are exercising, you guessed it, fiduciary responsibility. With that, this might be the longest recap I've ever given and it's uh closer to midnight now, so I'm gonna go to sleep. Uh I am Shelby Williams with Plano City Council. If you have made it this long, thank you very much for sticking with me. Good night, God bless.